Welcome everyone to the May 24 Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and folks at home. The first item up on our agenda this evening is committee reports and items of interest to the mayor, city council, and city manager. So I'll just start it out. And say I'm sure on behalf of all of us, our appreciation to the Budget Committee for all the hard work that they essentially wrapped up last week. That includes all of you, right? So, thank you all very, very much. I want to, I had the opportunity to speak at three different classes last week, two at the University of Oregon on sustainability and one at Lane Community College on conflict and peace. And so that was, those were wonderful opportunities. Tomorrow, I have Mayor's One-on-One at Market of Choice on Franklin. So I want to invite anyone who's listening who would like to come and talk about any issues of concern to please come in at 5:00, Market of Choice on Franklin. Want to remind people that at 6:00 tomorrow evening, LCC is going to have their forum on their Green Energy Center across from the library. They would like people to come and engage with them in that discussion. And then on Wednesday, there's the Electric Vehicle Open House at the Wheeler Pavilion at the Fairgrounds at 6:00. So come and hear about plug-ins for the corridor for electric vehicles. And that same night, there's also an open house at Churchill on Envision Eugene. So lots, lots going on. Mike?
I knew you were going to do that. Thank you Mayor, very much. I too appreciated the opportunity to participate in all the Budget Committee meetings and I wanted to say again, although I said it there, I'd like to say it here, congratulations to the manager and to the staff. I think in the six years I've had a chance to work on city budgets, that one went more smoothly and with a less number of amendments and it was less contentious with the discussion than I think I've ever seen. And I think that's a testament to having presented an initial budget that was well thought out and well discussed and vetted so well by staff. So congratulations, good job. I attended the Police Commission on the 13th. And then in our ongoing duties as council officers, Betty and I had the chance to meet with the auditor this, last week and we had some discussion about some of the things that we may see from both the Citizens Review Board here in their June report. If any of you would like to talk about that, we have further detail that we can talk about at a future point. And then he also talked about his decision to let the Assistant Auditor go. And I wanted to ask the city attorney for a piece of clarification there if I could. My recollection is that the council by charter has the responsibility and the right to speak only towards three employees or to have anything to do with the work of three employees, and that's the city manager, the auditor, and the municipal court judge. Do I have that right?
Correct.
So that would, and as I have it, the auditor, or excuse me, the council, having anything to do with any say of hiring and firing of any other city employee is precluded by charter and there's some penalties to us for that?
That would be true if you're talking about any employee other than the employees in the auditor's office.
Okay.
The charter, the charter prohibition related to elected officials commenting on other employees was adopted prior to the police auditor. And so the provision that says you shouldn't do anything related to those other employees is in a part of the charter that really deals with the powers of the city manager. But the city code that the council adopted related to the office of the police auditor says explicitly that it is the auditor who supervises, hires, fires, makes all personnel-related decisions related to the auditor's staff. So it's not the charter that precludes it, it's the city code that precludes the council from being involved there.
Okay. I appreciate you helping clear that up. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you Mayor. So been pretty busy this last couple of weeks. It seems like I was in budget committees all two weeks besides our own. I was on the Bethel Budget Committee and then El Rapa went through their own process. There's concerns about Cottage Grove not wanting to put it in their budget, so I'm going to send, forward you all the email that was sent to me from Merlin Ho, just to let you know what's up to date on that. I attended a town hall at Sonbrook, Songbrook, at St. Jennifer's Ward. Speaker of the House David Hunt was there. Representatives Terry Byer, Paul Hovey, Val Hoyle, and Nancy Nathanson were there and they all just spoke about general issues. They didn't really, they just were there to listen to the community there. Also, the city manager from Junction City was there and there was talk about the hospital that's going out there and they're looking forward to those jobs coming to the community. Saturday, I spent the day with the Bethel School District. I was part of their group. They did a Latino, the first ever, or the first annual, they put it, Latino Youth Summit. And they had actually over 600 people there from all over the state. It was kind of the southern valley because north of us, like Salem and north Portland, they have a pretty big contingency. So they, they kind of focused on the more rural districts. They actually had almost 100 people, probably 70, I wouldn't say 100, but a, a big contingency from Medford that came up on several buses. There are, there's three school districts that joined together and brought community members and such up. Colt Gill, George Russell, Richard LaRiviere, Nancy Golden, and Donna, whose name I can't remember from LCC, and Jim Garcia were on this panel and kind of spoke about trends and about statistics and, you know, things all related to education. Presentations were given by Dr. Edward Alvos and Dr. Charles Martinez. It were a pretty good summation of just looking at the local demographics, which is really good because a lot of the stuff that you read around Latinos and education is all at a national level. And then you get to Oregon and it's like .6 of a percent. And so it really does, it's not, it's hard to make it relevant. And the most exciting thing I've done the last two weeks is I had my grandkids spend the night. Thank you Mayor.
Yeah, I attended the memorial service for Adele McMillan today, who, those of you that have been here for a while know that she was a great contributor to the community for many, many, many years, ran the Urban Memorial Union for many, many years and was very, not only involved at the university, but also at United Way and City Club and a number of other functions. And it was, it was, it was a very, it was a very good service. Also, I was very gratified with the Budget Committee. I thought it was one of the best budget committees I've been to that I can remember. And it was a real, I guess a real credit that after I left the meeting, you went through everything so great and moved it all so fast.
You left?
See? That's my point. No, it was very gratifying. I was very pleased to see as little change with it as there was. I think it was a real testament, not only to the skill of the staff, but also the acknowledgement of the situation that we're in financially. I did have the opportunity to go to the school board meeting last week to be there as a resource and answer questions that they might have regarding their deliberations on a concurrence with regard to the property tax implications of, of the Urban Renewal District. And after they talked about it for a while and deliberated, they voted unanimously to support the concurrence, that this indeed is the situation. And so we now have the school district's agreement that the financial implications we've talked about here, they also agree with. So that was also, I was gratified to see that. Those are all the things I have right now.
George?
Pass for the seat.
Okay, George?
Thanks. I'd like to go back to something, a topic that Counselor Clark brought up regarding the police auditor's dismissal of his assistant. And I just, it's a question for the attorney. Whereas we are strictly forbidden by the charter from commenting or trying to influence the manager and his personal decisions, we can comment on this. Is that my, on the auditors?
The provision of the charter that Mike was referring to is one that I do not believe applies with respect to the auditor's office. But if you're, if you're thinking about commenting, it would be best if you give me a chance to go back, go through the charter, go through the code, and then send you all a memo, which I can do later this week, that's, would spell out, here's what you can and can't do with respect to that.
Yes, I've commented to the, to the police auditor, to Mr. Gessner, expressing my extreme disappointment, but also that I didn't want to second-guess him. But just in case we're asked questions, you know, by the media or something in the future, if he could clarify that. I appreciate it.
I'll get you, I'll get you all a memo in your Thursday packet.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thanks.
I just had a couple of things. First of all, the active Bethel citizens are having a meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 at the Peterson Barn. And then on Saturday, June 5th, it's the annual We Are Bethel Celebration, also at the Peterson Barn, from about 11:00 to 4:00. And that'll feature a lot of local artists and lots of local flavor. It's great, a lot of great activities for kids too. So it's a very family-oriented event. And I hope that everyone can attend. I also attended an MWMC meeting and where we finally said goodbye, well, we said goodbye to Peter Ruffier, who spent more than 17 years here in the Public Works Department. So it's really sad to see him go because he's just a, has such a terrific personality, very easy to work with, and very extraordinarily knowledgeable and very patient in explaining waste toller rates to me over and over and over. And I also attended a PSCC meeting and the mayor and I attended a Human Services Commission meeting. That's it.
Betty?
I attended the Workforce Partnership Executive Committee meeting. They continue to do good work and talk about doing good work. About Adele McMillan, as Chris said, she did a lot for the community, but she also was on the City Planning Commission for more than two terms and did, did a lot of good work there. I walked today, I've heard from some people about the new marks on the sidewalk near the bus station. And I walked over there today and looked at it. I think it's an awfully wide spot for get, for trap, for people to get through. And I talked to some of the kids who were there and asked them what they thought about it and they aren't happy, of course, but they are confined now to a little place on the edge of the street. I wondered why the marks were put, there's a lot more space than enough space for people to walk through. And I wondered why it's so big. If anybody knows that, I'd be interested in.
I suspect because it delineates the sidewalk itself, not just a portion of the sidewalk. So it encompasses the width of the sidewalk?
Yeah, well, I'm concerned that people aren't able to stand there and talk for a while. And I assume I was breaking the law today when I stood there for a few minutes and talked to some of the kids. Because I was in the, I was in the marked-off space and they were in the space where they're safe to be.
No.
But, but some people have said to me, it seems like an attempt to get rid of the kids downtown.
I think the intent really is, is to ensure that there's a clear passage for people that want to pass along or walk or move through the sidewalk area. So by virtue of you just standing there, you're not breaking the law at all. It's just to keep a clear passage for people can traverse that public right-of-way.
Okay, well, one half that space would do though, in my opinion. Thank you, that's all.
So just to follow up on that, since you get to clar, it's your turn anyway. The sign, as I recall from walking here and looking at, simply says, leave space for people to get through. Is it essentially?
And do not block the sidewalk, right?
Right.
That's really the intent to so, people have a chance.
So it doesn't prohibit per se anybody from standing, as long as people can move through, is that?
Right, that's the intent, people to move through the sidewalk if, and I think everybody knows, if you've been down there, generally people congregate on the sidewalk and it's difficult for people to maneuver down through there. And so that's been, that's what the intent has been.
Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of things. I also was going to mention, and we've talked about it before, Peter Ruffier's last day is this Friday. And as you mentioned, Jennifer, he's been a great asset to this community and to the city organization. One of the things that I think we can be really proud about is, is the wastewater treatment operation that he has shown leadership for. If you think about sustainability, you think about green, you think about creativity and innovation, it's really pretty far-reaching and also sort of on the front of the wave when we think about national kind of thing. So he has really been out in front of that and I really appreciate that. Tim Dahl, our airport manager, was elected to the National Board of Directors for the American Association of Airport Executives, which is a national organization with over 850 airports. And so it's a pretty significant recognition by his peers, but also brings with it sort of a national piece to that. Our fleet was also named one of the 100 Best Fleets for 2010 by Government Fleet Magazine, which is also a significant honor. And Tony Japonik out there, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet him at all, he's just a wonderful city employee and doing some pretty interesting things out there also in the fleet operations. And then the Bravo Breakfast is Friday, the 4th of June. This is the Arts and Business Alliance Breakfast, recognizing some partnership between business and the arts. And so if you would like to attend that and if you haven't already, RSVP, let us know. We'll make sure that you're able to do that. On the 8th is the US Bank Annual Economic Outlook. Their annual piece around that, if you'd like to attend that, please let us know also and we'll ensure that you have a place there. And then just lastly, a couple of you mentioned the budget process. I know there's still, the council has to make a formal vote on that. And there are just scores of people in the city organization that put in a lot of hard work. But I just wanted to recognize Kristi Hammett, Sue Cutsit George, and Mia Kiriaga particularly. If you take a look at it, all three of them, this was really their first budget in the positions that they are in and probably one of the more challenging budgets we've been through in a long, long time. And I thought they showed tremendous leadership in the organization and kind of moving us through that. So I just want to say thanks to them for that.
And I'll just wrap up this section by saying, you may know the date, but I know that the Oregon Hispanic Commission is coming here to the community to hear from people. So.
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
They'll be at the Bascom Tyson Library.
Bascom Tyson, the library. From 9:00 till noon, I think, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
That might be interested in, in attending that. Okay, so thank you everyone, and we'll move on now to the next item on our agenda, an important one, where we're trying to get a grip on all the planning initiatives underway.
Only just getting ready.
City Manager.
I'm just going to wait for that to click on at some point. All right, let me go back. So just a little bit on the officially Sarah Midary Assistant City Manager, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about the evolution of this work session because how it initially transpired was, I am often in the unique position of being in multiple meetings with all of you, but not all other city staff are in. And so I, I often will see you ask some of the same questions as we go from one planning process to another planning process. And so initially, this started out as a, how can we just explain all the different things that are going on and how they're connected? That's how it initially started. And then what you know has happened since then is the Sustainability Commission came and said, hey, we, we're not 100% sure that you have this transportation land use nexus figured out and how are you going to talk about climate uncertainty and energy volatility and don't we need a decision-making model to make sure that these things are integrated moving forward? And so this is really going to be kind of a short presentation to talk about kind of the high-level profile stuff that's happening right now and the different tools we use to make sure things are integrated. And then a discussion about things you might want to see different. So I'm going to have the same problem everybody else does. So I've tried to do a simplified diagram here.
That's what it feels like.
Yeah.
Well, that's the simple.
So you're that green box in the middle. No, I, you know, hopefully this won't show up in the Register Guard because it is, it is humor. But, but it often actually does feel like that because we do a lot of planning. We do a lot of planning here in Eugene and we do a lot of planning in Oregon. We also try to make sure our policies and our programs are aligned. We have lots of partners we're constantly working with, so, so it does feel a little bit like this. And so tonight, what I'm going to try to do is focus on just a couple of the top-level things that you're going to hear more about as we move on. And these are the things that I think out there, when people think about planning that's happening right now, that get the, wow, this is big and how are we going to move through this? And so we just recently came through the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment, but I put it up there because it's a very long technical process and it really feeds into Part 2, which will be the next couple of things actually. Envision Eugene, which is our community plan we're working on, that's going to be looking at the population growth we need for the next 20 years and how is our community going to look? And that's the next thing on the agenda. And also a very big plan, big deal, as I was reminded today. We've never moved our urban growth boundary since it was initially established. So if there's any discussion about that, it's, it's, it's a big process. Our Transportation System Plan, I think previously, most people think of Transplan. And if you dig very far into any one of these items, especially Transportation System, you'll start to get more acronyms, more plans, more governing bodies, and that particular item can get very complicated. But for this, we're talking about Eugene's Local Transportation System Plan. Our Eugene Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, you saw the draft of that just a couple of weeks ago, I think, or maybe last week. And that plan has a lot, also a lot of different stakeholders and has very specific items and objectives that we should be looking towards around land use, transportation, food security, and a number of other items. And then a couple of other things that people talk about a lot, the West Eugene Collaborative, the West Eugene MX, and how does all this fit into our economy and our Regional Prosperity Plan we've all been working on? So I wish I could give you the Holy Grail, but I'm going to talk a little bit about why we do all this, if the thing will switch.
It's a good plan.
I know. So that's the other, why do we do so many plans? I mean, is Eugene really different and, and why do we? And I think we are a little bit different than lots of places in the world in that we have a great city and we have great places here and they don't come by accident. And if you really look at Oregon land use history and how this all kind of started, Oregon is very different and it looks different. And it's different because we've planned a lot and people in our history have planned and, and we plan. But it, it's really kind of a way we can all come together about what our vision is for the future. So it's a time to set aside what we don't want to be and think about what we do want to be, have a broad amount of community engagement that can move us forward there. The other piece I would talk about is, we plan for different reasons. So part of it is great city, great vision, community engagement, but we also have legal requirements we have to abide by. So for instance, part of what's happening with Envision Eugene is being pushed by the House Bill 3337 that said you'll have two separate urban growth boundaries, Eugene and Springfield, and you need to, you know, get this figured out and planned. And it's, it's, has some legal dates and legal mandates and, so there's a real legal reason, but that's not the only reason. There's also funding requirements. When you start getting into the transportation plans, you know, you can't get certain kinds of transportation planning without specific plans and specific documents. And then just more broadly, funding opportunities. If you look at something like Rivers to Ridges, you know, here's a great vision plan of our, you know, outdoor space from Fern Ridge Reservoir to kind of out to the Mount Pisgah area. You know, those kinds of plans help us fund, you know, bring in force, legacy dollars, and lots of other opportunity grants that they want to see. You've got to plan for how you're going to do this. So it's important to plan, it's important to have good plans. And that really kind of feeds into, when we have all those, how do we know we're making the right decisions? And I'm going to move into a very loose baseball analogy here, but really who is on first? Because that's what I feel like I keep getting asked a lot in the community, is how do we know you guys are coordinated? And I would just say, at the highest level, you're on first in many ways. And this is what drives a lot of what we do. So your overall vision, which you've recently updated, that, you know, it's a lot of words, I'm just putting it up there so people can see, you know, you do have a vision. And in those visions, you talk about being responsible stewards of our physical assets, that you appreciate people's differences, you know, livable and safe neighborhoods, strong, sustainable vibrant economy. And what those have kind of built to are your five council goals. Now, I'm not going to go into the wording on all of those, but these are your highest level, the things you've said you want us to accomplish in this community and in this organization. And so I'm just going to pick one of them out because we're moving really towards the triple bottom line here and what our decision-making model is. And that's when we start talking about sustainable development. You have told us, you know, again and again for, you know, since this was 2005 and you reaffirmed it in 2010, you want a community that meets its present environmental, economic, and social needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. And just this last year, through the Eugene Counts process, you have gone out to the community and you've said, what outcomes do you, do you want to see that let you know that's happening? What's on the top of your mind right now? And what we heard was, and what you agreed to was, we should be looking at increased downtown development, strategic job creation, decreased unemployment, support for small and local business. And I've highlighted this bottom one, decision-making that weighs economic, social equity, and environmental effects. And so we do that. And we do it in a number of ways. First, we hire knowledgeable and dedicated staff. And I know that sounds just simple and maybe corny, but it's, what Alan would say is, you know, we hire certified smart people. We have really good people that are dedicated to doing this work. And there's a room of them behind me that are going to come up here next and talk about Envision Eugene. And they, they know their stuff and they're working really hard to make sure that we're thinking about how things affect the environment, how it affects people that live here, and how it affects the economy. Beyond that, we pursue and maintain regional partnerships and we do this really actively. And we are always working with Lane County, Springfield, the school districts, we have, you know, LCOG, numbers of businesses, chambers of commerce, you know, the list goes on and on. And I think for any one of these planning projects, if we start to look at the stakeholder lists, they're, they're large. And even as we are moving into Envision Eugene, you're going to hear more and more about how many people we're trying to get. Because we know that each one of those partnerships brings a unique perspective in terms of the triple bottom line. We've really worked hard to integrate the values of, you know, the triple bottom line into our workforce. One of the ways we've done that is by integrating the team at the CMO. We've brought together human rights, equity, sustainability, neighborhoods, and, you know, just trying to pull together a team and also trying to say with that, that these aren't programs, they're organizational values. And so we know that we are best served when each one of our employees understands that the decisions they make need to be weighed on this triple bottom line. For example, you know, from closing a sidewalk for a small repair, we want people to think about, what does that mean to people that may only have access to this one curb cut? What does that mean to the business that's trying to, you know, get things done? So I think it's just important to put that in. We have a lot of cross-departmental efforts. Long before there was a Sustainability Commission and our own internal sustainability board, we had what we called the Environmental Policy Team. And for better or worse, it was the Sustainability Board from years ago. And that's when we started realizing that, you know, the decisions that were happening in Public Works and in planning and different, all affected each other and we needed to be really integrated. And so I think it started at that level, at the highest level, and it's, it's transformed into the Sustainability Board. And still is a place where we take policies and ideas to make sure we're getting everybody looking at them. So something like Envision Eugene, making sure that, you know, as we're building our work program, that everybody has a chance to weigh in and that we're considering the triple bottom line. And then lastly, because it's the right thing to do, and I think based on some of the work from the Sustainability Commission, we've developed the Triple Bottom Line Tool. So this is an actual tool that's online. And I think it would be to your benefit to come back with another work session just to talk about the tool and show you the questions and walk you through what one project would look like through that. It could be one of these planning projects. But the tool is online. It's a way we can evaluate programs, policy, service delivery. And what, what happened was a cross-organizational team of people and I think with the Sustainability Commission weighing in, correct me if I'm wrong, and playing a part in that, they came up with five or six kind of thematic areas where we should have lists of questions and concerns. And each one of those had three or four bullet points. So I'd say there's a total of 52 items that cross social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity, that if you're doing a project, you can go in, you click and you, and it just, it's a reminder, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? So here's three sample questions. Does this proposal take into account language or cultural barriers? You know, will this proposal or ongoing operations increase or decrease greenhouse gas emissions? What are the impacts of this proposal on job creation within Lane County? Now, those are just three little simple questions, but for some projects that we've started to send through, people haven't necessarily thought about all those different items and how each one of these things could affect them. So it's been a good tool. It's meant to be a, not a yes or a no, you do the project or you don't do the project, but one to make sure you've thought about everything and that we can present to you as we do in our AISs in the future, you know, what are the triple bottom line impacts? So John will talk about, as we continue on this conversation, about kind of that sweet spot. And that's really where we're trying to figure out, you know, on each one of these plans, you know, there really is kind of a sweet spot. It's not going to be perfect. You know, we're going to have, you know, issues around the environment and economy and greenhouse gases. All these things are going to pull projects in different directions. And there's a spot in the middle that we'll call like that point of integration or the sweet spot. in the middle that we'll call like that point of integration or the sweet spot, where you know, you know, when you've hit it, you've kind of got the, you know, home run, which is Eugene. And hopefully, you know, it's a Eugene that we all want to stay in and live in and prosper in, and it's, you know, our own grand slam. But I think that's really what we're trying to accomplish. So the triple bottom line is the framework for our decision-making, and I think when you hear from Lisa and the group afterwards, they'll probably talk about that a little bit as well. So with that, we'll just have a discussion to see what more information you might need to know we've hit that sweet spot or we're aiming in at it.
I just want you to go back to the picture of sweet spot. It looked mighty sad.
No, it's been hit, it's been, that's a good spot right there. Right there.
That's a run ball.
Right there is where we want Envision Eugene to be.
That's for people who know baseball.
Well...
It's good, it's good, Sarah. It's okay, Sarah.
No, it's good, but...
You're right.
You know, it's relevant to those who know what that means. Because some people, they get to play sports when they were in high school, so it's a different world.
Thank you. Good job. So I, I'll just, yep. Why don't you start out?
Okay, good deal. So good work. This is good. I appreciate anything that, I appreciate all the work the staff does, but I really appreciate it when things are put in a format that everybody's going to use and so that the language is common.
Mm-hmm.
Because that makes more sense to me, because I, like your first diagram, that's how I feel a lot of the times. And so this will work for me, because I really feel like I need to, I need to have consistent message, and everything has to be relevant to whatever that message is. And I do think that, I do like to also think that we do hire certified smart people here, because I think a lot of the city staff is really, the majority of them that I've dealt with are really, are really good employees.
I just sort of wanted to throw into the mix, and I'm sure it'll come up, but I didn't yet see it reflected, I mentioned it to you guys earlier today. I just want, rail is going to be such a big thing, I think we need to be sure it gets integrated into this discussion as well. So just wanted to take note of that. Mike, would you like to, anything to add here?
No, I don't think so, other than I'm, once again, struck at the certified smart people we do have here and the quality of their work. Appreciate it very much.
Anybody else? I've never seen them so quietly.
I know.
They hit the sweet spot.
They're ready for the next presentation.
I guess for me, I'll just bring this up, but I understand what we're trying to do here, and I think you've presented it really well. The challenge is thinking about all those planning processes and figuring out how we're going to be able to integrate that much thinking and make it all move in the same direction. And that's the part that I talk about a lot, because I'm fumbling with it in my brain so much of the time, about how are we going to do regional transportation, TransPlan, climate and energy, Envision Eugene, all of those things, and kind of move everything and not get something out preemptively in front of something else before we've really had a chance to set it up correctly. So how do you, and at the same time, you've got things pushing you along because you're having to meet goals, so I just, that's what, I don't struggle with this concept at all. I struggle with how we're going to plug everything in and make it work in a way that we'll feel like, oh yeah, we see how everything's fitting into this and moving in the same direction.
Right. I guess on that, you know, one of the things that I thought was, well, one of the things really interesting is this, we're on a couple of really large planning projects since the kind of triple bottom line way of doing things. So these are really the first, I would say, two very large planning projects that we're really working to integrate those things in the way to the depth that we are this time. I can speak on the, you know, the Transportation System Plan. You know, I thought it was great, staff were at the first, transportation staff were at the first Envision Eugene workshop with their first brochure around, hey, we're also going to be doing the Transportation System Plan, and we're working with Envision Eugene, and here's what it is, and starting to get the people that are there using the same language and vocabulary, kind of the consistency piece, so that one can kind of move into the other as we go. One of the things that I think will be a challenge, will be a challenge for all of us, and so that's why I think it's helpful to know how we should be presenting the information, is that each one of these items is standalone, and then it's also braided in. So you're going to have Envision Eugene going along, and it's going to hit a point where the Transportation System Plan needs to feed in, and then it kind of goes back and forth with the prosperity. And so we just, you know, for us, we're trying to pick those points where the braids need to come together, so we can make sure when it's done, the whole thing is strong and it stands alone. And so it's hard to explain, because we've never been through it in the same way. So, you know, short of having a city manager's recommendation that says, trust us, because we need to be able, it's trying to figure out, how will you feel comfortable that those points are happening?
I guess, just one more point, and then I'll call on George and Chris, is for me, it's like, I don't want to do something in my transportation planning or my envisioning that is counter to what we're trying to do in our economic, I mean, those are the things that I worry about, that we'll get in the way of ourselves, and I guess you can't promise me that's not going to happen, or we won't use it in a way that will most effectively leverage everything we have to move us in a direction that we can feel that we're heading out into our, really heading out into our future. That's just my...
And one way will be to use, I think, the triple bottom line tool, if nothing else, is a great checklist and a way to have a conversation and make sure the pieces are at least included and considered and thought out, so...
George Brown.
Well, that's my question exactly. You were talking about the triple bottom line earlier, and you mentioned 52 items to consider. Can we see a list?
Yep.
I don't believe that we've seen, that you've...
Yeah, I don't think you've seen the full...
Presented that.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that came up when we were planning for this, is that it would be great to spring back and show you all the questions we're considering.
Yeah, that'd be good. Because then we can see exactly how, you know, how it's meant to work, because I really don't understand how, I mean, I know what it is. I know what it is theoretically, but I don't understand how it would work when we consider all these other things. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of work, and there's a lot of work still ahead for us. And I guess it's something that we need to kind of internalize and acknowledge, that there is a lot of conflict ahead. And not, and I don't want it to be the kind of conflict where you kind of spiral into paralysis. I want it to be the kind of conflict where we work it through and we come out with something better than we had going into it. I think conflict can do that, if you manage it properly. And I don't think the kinds of conflicts we'll be confronting are ones that are unique to us necessarily. I'll go to a leadership institute taught in South Carolina, and they will talk about these as conflicts all municipalities go through. Because any place you have more than two people, you're going to have two points of view on what something should be. So that's the, you go into it knowing that you're going to have conflicts between reasonable values. Envision Eugene will be a perfect example. There will be a reasonable value on this side and one on this side, and they will simply be in conflict. And we, what we owe the community, those of us that will be the policymakers, will be as informed and as thoughtful and as deliberative as we can be when we have to make that choice. Because some folks will like the choice and some folks won't, but we have to make choices or we won't make progress. So I don't want to lecture, but I guess I just, we just need to recognize that this isn't going to be a, you know, we all march lovingly down the road to a great future. There'll be a lot of conflict along the way, but that can actually be a positive rather than negative, if we just approach it the right way. And that responsibility will rest with us. I mean, we'll get lots of input, but ultimately, that responsibility will rest with us. And so we will owe it to be thoughtful when we do it. I think we can, and I think it can be a good outcome.
I think this is sort of like the legislation that separated the UGB. Now, we may have preferred that it didn't come to us that way, but you can look at it as an opportunity to have the discussions that we may have been very reluctant to have if we weren't, hadn't been forced to do it. And now, and I will say that this body did say, let's not just do it partway, let's do it the whole way. Let's really take a really comprehensive look and try to move out into the future in all of our plans, looking at where we're going and give ourselves a real sense of what we want to accomplish, which is what I think you were talking about this evening. So I think it is an opportunity. And yes, it will, we've said it over and over again, it will be hard, but there are a lot of, not only smart people on our staff, but a lot of smart people in our community who can really help with this discussion. And our challenge will be to get over the initial skepticism that we all sort of bring to this kind of conversation, not knowing if we have the ability to get over it or not, and to keep working till we get there. And so I think we can, I think we can get there too, but I, and I don't think it will be particularly easy, but I think we'll be pleased with the results of putting in the energy that it takes to do it. Any other comments, questions? All right, so I think, thank you for that, Sarah.
Very much.
And we will go on to the next thing on this list, and one of the, one of the major things we're doing, Envision Eugene.
Chris, I think she's giving you a run on the Captain Metaphor thing, too. I'm not sure who's doing it. The baseball thing's pretty good. Say, Sarah's giving him a run for Captain Metaphor.
Chris, you are the smart people.
Yeah, the certifies are here.
Pretty awesome thing you put on your shoulders.
Don't have my expectations, do you? Don't worry.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Gardner, I'm the Planning Director. I'm actually studying to become a certified smart person, but I failed the diagram test twice now. So we were last before you in April, where you took action to accept the land need for the Eugene Comprehensive Land Assessment Process. And at that work session, you directed staff to come back with the recommendations from the Community Advisory Committee from ECLA about the particular issues that might be included within the scope of work for Envision Eugene. So we've done that. I wanted to just sort of frame for you the project phases before we jump into that. The first phase of the, there's really four components. The first piece was assessing the land need, which was ECLA, which we've just completed. The second is analyzing the efficient use of land, and that's the current phase that we're in. The phase to follow that, if needed, would be analyzing expansion areas. And then we would be putting it all together in a comprehensive plan, documenting it, looking at any regulations, code amendments, policy changes that need to occur. So those are the four pieces. We've already done a tremendous amount of work, both in that first phase with ECLA, and then over the past four, three, four, five months, we had scoping the project, studying the technical and legal components that need to be included, and then developing our public involvement approach. We have already had our first workshop, it was May 4th, we had over 200 participants, and many of you were there and saw firsthand the tremendous energy in the room. I think there's a lot of enthusiasm. We are holding our second workshop this Wednesday, May 26th, at Churchill High School. There's an open house from 6:00 to 7:00, and then the workshop is from 7:00 to 9:00. We have a number of other opportunities, and our focus in putting together our public outreach plan was really to be sort of unconventional, to try to reach people in new ways. We've developed and implemented some surveys to targeted focus groups, including our Sustainability Commission, our Planning Commission, members of the ECLA, CAC, and others. We've been doing presentations to all, every neighborhood association, to other community organizations throughout the city. We're holding a youth art contest, and not just to sort of be creative in how we engage our youth in thinking about their future, but also a way to hopefully hook in their parents, who potentially don't have time or otherwise wouldn't be as involved in these kinds of planning events in our community. We have developed an interactive website, where we're posting all of our workshop presentations, online surveys, and we have a video that we produced. If we could just take a minute, I'd like to show you the video. Some of you may have seen it, and some of you are starring in it, and others were reluctantly dragged into it.
Kicking and screaming a little, but...
Hi, I'm Eugene Mayor Kitty Piercy, and I'd like to welcome you to Envision Eugene, an incredibly important project that will help shape how and where our community will grow over the next 20 years. Launched by state mandate, we have the opportunity to envision Eugene's future without preconception in a way that works for us. When we are done, we will have a Eugene Specific Urban Growth Boundary and a new comprehensive plan that will serve as a roadmap for future development in our city. In the next few minutes, you will hear more about this significant undertaking. Please make it a point to let us know how you envision Eugene. Participate in at least one of the many public involvement opportunities coming your way. Thank you.
Today, over 150,000 people call Eugene, Oregon, their home. Eugene is a special and attractive place for a variety of reasons. We have beautiful parks, natural areas, neighborhoods you can easily walk and bike in, numerous employment and education opportunities, great food and shopping destinations. There is also easy access to the great outdoors, the great Atlantic Coast and the Cascades, as well as fertile farmlands and healthy, productive forests all around us. By the year 2030, Eugene is expected to grow by 35,000 to 40,000 additional people. As a community, it's important to have a plan for how and where this growth will occur. We call that plan our comprehensive plan. In Oregon, like other states, there are a number of planning tools that cities have used to manage and plan for growth. One unique tool that Oregon cities have is the Urban Growth Boundary, or UGB.
A UGB is a boundary that limits where urban development can happen in a community. The purpose of UGBs in Oregon is to protect valuable farms and forest land from urban sprawl that can happen in other areas around the country. According to Oregon State law, a UGB must include enough land for 20 years of growth. That includes land for homes, schools, and parks, as well as businesses and manufacturing.
It's time for Eugene to update its comprehensive plan and UGB, and we need your help. Over the next several months, Envision Eugene will be asking for your input on our new community plan for 2030. The plan will shape where we live, work, learn, shop, and play, as well as how we get there, things that Eugeneans care about and that affect our daily lives.
The plan will help us answer the question, how and where are we going to accommodate a population of nearly 200,000 people? How do we envision Eugene? What's important to us about how our community looks and feels?
This is where you come in. We will be holding several public meetings in May and June at locations throughout the city. We will also be conducting online surveys and sponsoring a citywide youth art contest inspired by the project and judged by the mayor. Later this summer, multiple scenarios for how growth will play out over the next 20 years will be presented for people to review and comment on. So please, join us and let us know the answer to the question, how do you envision Eugene?
How do you envision Eugene?
Very nice.
Isn't that happy music?
Oh, folksy, but okay.
So as you can see, we're trying to do things a little bit, we're not going to do it again. I can't handle watching myself again. I'm not quitting my day job either. So in addition to our public outreach process, we've also been working really diligently to get a handle on the technical components of the project and the legal requirements. And to share some of that foundation for you this evening, Emily Jerome is going to give you an overview of the legal piece.
Can I should do that now?
Yes, please.
I will do that. I don't want to take a lot of time tonight, and actually, I'm not allowed to take a lot of time tonight, but it's really time, I think, that you had a little bit of legal background to help put, at least in perspective, your discussions for tonight, and hopefully send you off for future considerations of this project with a little bit more information. I'm going to talk in broad terms. Details about the specific laws that I'll kind of talk to you about tonight will come to you in every presentation that you hear on this project and in the materials that you get. But I want to start by backing up a little bit about why it is that we are now working on this project, Envision Eugene, and as has been mentioned a few times tonight, it's House Bill 3337 is what brought this project up to us. Essentially, that law said that Eugene needs to adopt an urban growth boundary that is separate from Springfield. I will note that House Bill 3337 did include no deadline for establishing this new urban growth boundary. It did include a deadline for reaching a particular... It did include a deadline for reaching a particular point in the process. So there were particular studies that needed to be completed by last December. We took a little bit longer to just really feel comfortable with those. That part of our project is done. So the timeline that was included in House Bill 3337 has been met. What we knew from 3337 for certain is that we would need to redraw our urban growth boundary so that our eastern boundary went up the I-5 corridor. That's what we knew. Anytime a city redraws a portion of its urban growth boundary, it has to comply with, it has to show that it's complying with every statewide planning goal. There are 19 of them, not all of which are applicable in our jurisdiction. But in addition to those goals, also all the administrative rules and statutes that implement those particular goals. The overarching requirement, of course, it's been talked about a number of times already, is that we will need to demonstrate that our new urban growth boundary includes enough land and the right kind of land to accommodate the specific housing and employment needs of Eugene's population that's forecasted for 20 years out. A couple of things on that. We're required to use the population that Lane County set for us and that we were required to adopt. And of course, we currently have some capacity in our current urban growth boundary to address the needs of that future population. So I'm going to try to talk to you in the same sort of phases and steps that Lisa presented this information to you. There are a lot of ways to look at this, and the statutes and administrative rules are all over the place. We've organized this in sort of four basic phases. The first one is that ECLA work, that you have seen a lot of and that will continue to be used throughout this Envision Eugene process and potentially updated. What we know from the ECLA work, ECLA tells us the number and the types of housing units that we are going to need to accommodate that 20-year population. And in a nutshell, we need about 4,000 single-family homes, lots for single-family homes, and we need about 1,000 units in multifamily. ECLA also tells us the number of commercial and industrial jobs we're going to need to accommodate to serve Eugene's 20-year population, and the characteristics of those facilities that we're going to need to provide for. So for example, someone mentioned rail. Certain industries need to be located close to rail. We may learn that we need a certain number of acreage of industrial land that's within five miles of I-5 or the railway. That's just the kind of thing that we will potentially need to find if we don't already have it. The third thing the ECLA work tells us is how much need would be met within our current urban growth boundary if we just moved that eastern boundary along I-5 and didn't change any of our regulations? What is our current capacity if all we did was make a Eugene-only urban growth boundary? How much could we accommodate? And what we have learned from ECLA is that we cannot just move the eastern boundary up the I-5 corridor and make no changes to our land use regulations. That just simply wouldn't accommodate our 20-year needs for housing and employment. So the city has to take some actions to address that need, and that brings us to what staff are referring to as Step Two or Phase Two, and it's deciding upon what actions we're going to take to accommodate that need. And that's what Envision Eugene is about. It's what choices are we going to make to accommodate this increased population? Essentially, there are two basic categories of choices. First, we can revise land use plans and our code to make it more likely that our current land supply within our current urban growth boundary with that eastern boundary moved, do things to make it more likely that we could accommodate more housing. We call these efficiency strategies. If we can't do enough through efficiency strategies, then we may also need to go into the second category of possibility, which is expand our urban growth boundary to include more land. But whatever package we come up with, whatever combination of actions we take to accommodate that need, we are going to, at the time we take those actions, demonstrate how the city will provide needed utilities for those houses and jobs, and that includes transportation. So if we pick an area that's going to, we're going to accommodate more density in, we're going to need to figure out how much more density, what's that going to do to our transportation system, and how we're going to accommodate that, add projects to our transportation plan perhaps. Utilities, transportation, these are all requirements, straight out of the statewide planning goals, 11, 12, 14. We also are going to need to show that the combination of actions that we take complies with state laws that were referred to earlier about preservation of farm and forest lands. We can't take actions that haven't considered all the state laws that are intended to ensure that we don't prematurely sprawl into farm and forest lands, and to the extent that we need to go out to farm and forest lands, that we are not taking the most fertile lands unless those are clearly the best alternative for the urban need. We also have to show that we are protecting significant natural resources. So to the extent we look in new areas that we haven't already done an inventory, a Goal Five Natural Resources inventory, we'll need to look at that land and ensure that we're protecting natural resources, and then not counting protected areas as land that could be developed to meet our need. We have to pay close attention and make findings of consistency with goals that relate to clean air and clean water, to energy conservation, and to natural hazards. And of course, we will need to make sure that we're complying with the first two goals, which are citizen involvement and the component of Goal Two that requires intergovernmental coordination. All of these things are absolutely on staff's radar, and it's a lot. But when we come to you with a final package, when you have arrived at a final package, it will include lots of documentation addressing all of these things. So as we mentioned, we can't justify any urban growth boundary expansion unless we are able to show that we are using the land within the urban growth boundary efficiently first. So staff's Step Two is this looking at efficiency strategies. What can we do within reason to accommodate further growth within our urban growth boundary before we take action to add new land to the urban growth boundary? The most obvious things to us would be requiring or allowing smaller lot sizes, requiring or allowing greater densities in other ways, you know, adding height, providing economic incentives to encourage development in areas that are underdeveloped right now, potentially looking at your land use designation map and making decisions about whether in fact we should change the designations of what's allowed in certain areas in hopes that, not hopes, we actually have to show that that would result in more of the kind of development that we need. For each identified strategy, we'll be asking questions like, does that strategy actually get us what we need? We may be able to find a lot of places where we can allow taller apartment buildings. But when we need 4,000 single-family homes, that strategy isn't all we need. We're going to need to find strategies that get us those single-family homes. We're also going to need to figure out a way to quantify what we get from any efficiency strategy, because we need to be able to show the state that in fact, these strategies that we're using are going to get us the housing, the jobs that we've identified as our need. We're also, and this is one of the more technical areas, but we need to be able to show that we can serve these areas, that by the end of that 20-year period, we will be able to provide these areas that we're counting on for development with water, with sewer, and with transportation facilities that are adequate to meet their needs. And what that may mean is that if we find a particular area that we think is a ripe area for upzoning, for allowing more density, we may need to go into our public facilities plan and add projects that will happen within the 20-year period to serve them. That may include transplan, transportation projects, to make sure that they're adequately served with transportation. And in asking these questions, some efficiency strategies that initially seem like a great idea, we may find really aren't the right fit, and other ones really are. So asking these questions, I think that's what will lead us to the right decisions. Once we've determined that we've done what we can to reasonably accommodate growth within our urban growth boundary, then if that doesn't accommodate all of the need, we look outwards to see if an urban growth boundary expansion, to see where an urban growth boundary expansion would be appropriate. And that is what we refer to as Step Three, I think, in the AIS. With respect to urban growth boundary expansion, the city can't simply choose the area it wants to go in and necessarily go there. The city has to conduct analysis and comparison between possible alternatives for urban growth boundary locations, and this is another highly regulated area. But essentially, we have to show that the choice that the city makes as far as expansion goes complies with the state's directives for prioritizing land. First priority is land that's adjacent to our current urban growth boundary and that is least useful for farming or forest land. There are exceptions to that, though, that we may need to look at involving, can we get utilities? Can we reach these, you know, the top priority land may be land that for one reason or another is very difficult for us to serve, where another area of land may not be exactly the best land under the state's priority system, but it's very efficient for us to serve, makes the most sense. And as I said, any expansion areas need to be looked at for natural resource protections as well. So in the end of this project, what you will have is a package that you'll finally be ready to adopt your supply and demand studies, and along with those, an urban growth boundary that we have documentation to show that that urban growth boundary's location contains your 20-year need. And that's Step Four. I would expect that your Step Four package would include metro plan amendments to show that Eugene has a separate urban growth boundary, our own plan, our Envision Eugene plan, that shows that urban growth boundary and sets out the designations, the allowed uses, has policies about growth, code amendments, other plan amendments that will be adopting your efficiency strategies, some zoning map amendments, I would expect, and as I mentioned, transportation plan and public facility plan amendments, to the extent those are needed to serve the areas that we're identifying. All of this will follow your usual adoption process. These materials will go to the Planning Commission first, for Planning Commission, public hearings, deliberations, review, recommendations, and then come to you for that process as well. Some of these will require joint adoption, so we'll be working certainly with Lane County and probably with Springfield, certainly with Springfield at least with respect to a few of these matters. So I think that's where I'm going to leave the legal review. Obviously, here for questions.
It's very simple, straightforward.
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce Carolyn Weiss, who's our Metro and Community Planning Manager, and Carolyn's going to walk you through some of the specific scope of work issues for your discussion following our presentation.
Right, so I'm going to delve into a few more details here. You probably recall that when the ECLA Community Advisory Committee recommended that you approve the findings of that committee, they also submitted to you a list of issues that they felt should be followed up on, and perhaps as part of the Envision Eugene project. So I'd like to refer to Attachment A, that was in your AIS, for a list of those issues. Also, we have included issues that we have heard from the community as we've been out there talking with folks, and also there are a few items from staff that are included on this list as well. So for each issue that is in this matrix, we looked at what effects, including it in the scope of work, what the effect on the timing of the project would be. We also looked at the resources, the money that would be required to undertake that work, and we also just looked at whether or not it leveraged recent community planning efforts. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of years, and we wanted to see what work could be integrated into this project and what really made sense to capitalize on. So there are a total of 19 issues on that list, and staff would recommend that we address 13 of those issues. And I'm just going to point out a few of them to kind of illustrate what we've done here. Items one through five on the list are actually legally required to some extent. So those five items really do need to be included in the project's scope of work, to the extent that they're required by law. So those are definitely recommended for inclusion in the scope of work. The remaining items six through 13, which are also included for inclusion in the scope of work, have a high level of community interest. I'll just point out item number six, which is more integrated land use and transportation. We've actually heard quite a bit about that so far tonight, and some of the benefits of integrating Envision Eugene with the upcoming Transportation System Plan update would mean that we could leverage some of the work that will happen as part of that transportation planning, the modeling, the traffic counts, and even the public engagement, so really kind of trying to sync those projects up. Number eight on the list is the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan. Tremendous amount of interest in the final document, which is expected in August of this year, and we've heard a lot of interest from the community wanting us to integrate the findings of that work into Envision Eugene. Number nine on the list is development standards, and it's maybe not apparent, but the development standards are very much in parallel with a lot of the recommendations from the Infill Compatibility Standards Task Team that has done a tremendous amount of work over the last couple of years. As we grow more dense, ensuring that we have development standards in place that protect the livability of our community are important, and so that's what those development standards are in reference to. A few other items I'd like to point out are recommended by staff for inclusion, and that includes number 11, which is performing seasonally appropriate inventories of natural resources in potential expansion areas. So you heard from Emily that if we do expand the urban growth boundary, we do need to comply with Goal Five Natural Resources, and that includes inventorying those resources, such as wetlands and endangered plant species. And we need to do those, it's best to do those inventories at an appropriate time of year, such as when there is water, when you can see the wetlands, and in the spring when those plants are first coming out. So our current timeline actually does not give us the leeway to do those inventories at the appropriate time of year, so we just wanted to point that out to folks. Item 12 is utilization of the Triple Bottom Line Tool, something that Sarah referred to earlier in the presentation. We've done a preliminary analysis of the project through the Triple Bottom Line Tool. We brought together representatives from the Planning Commission, from the Sustainability Commission, the Human Rights Commission, and various staff and other folks from the community to just help us scope out the project, Envision Eugene, and see where those Triple Bottom Line items, the environment, equity, and economics kind of interface, and where that nexus is. And we believe strongly that as we begin to form recommendations through this process, we'd like to run those recommendations through that Triple Bottom Line Tool and just to inform our work. So the remaining six issues on that list are not recommended for inclusion in the scope, and that is primarily because they either take a lot of time and would really extend the timeline of the project, or they are not necessarily critical to the work of Envision Eugene. And just a couple of... And just a couple of examples there, so you understand. Number 16 refers to the use of a dynamic computer modeling program that helps us better integrate the economic realities, along with our development and redevelopment potential. This is a very sophisticated computer modeling program. It's the one we don't have currently. It's one that Portland is using, and it's one that AlCOG is actually scoping out right now, and we believe we'll have access to that program in 2012. So, we look forward to getting that kind of robust program where we can plug in more economic realities, but we don't have it at this time, and we think we can still move forward regardless. Number 17 talks about providing additional regulatory protections of natural resources inside the urban growth boundary. So, I'd like to clarify that all lands that are currently inside our urban growth boundary that are protected have been accounted for in ECLi, they're not in the Buildable Lands Inventory, so they're accounted for appropriately in the lands assessment. Additionally, as Emily said, if we do expand the urban growth boundary, we are required to provide Goal Five protections of all those natural resource lands as well. What we are not proposing to do is to open up our natural resource regulations that we currently have inside the city. That is a big process. It involves a lot of inventorying and public process, and it could just really draw out the timeline of the Envision Eugene project. And finally, the last one I'll refer to is number 18, which was a recommendation to update Eugene's Park Plan, otherwise known as the PROS Plan, Parks, Recreation, and Open Again, all our existing park need was accounted for in ECLi, and so the lands assessment reflects that parks' need, and if we do expand our urban growth boundary, all lands, all expansion areas would be looked at to see if we need to provide park services there. But what we're not proposing to do is to kind of open up our whole Parks Plan again. It was, the project plan was just adopted in 2006. We think it's still relevant enough to build on today. So, I've been doing a lot of talking today, about to wrap up, and I just wanted to point out, Attachment B contains a list of specific tasks that would be undertaken for each one of these issues for consideration, and the reason we've included this in your packet is because any one of these issues could be examined at varying levels, and we wanted to be really explicit about the level to which we're proposing we look at that issue. So, that's there for your information. And just to close, I'll say that, obviously, if we are expanding our scope of work, there are timeline implications, and our purpose today was really to, or this evening, was to present this information to you, to give you a chance to ask questions of us and to have a conversation about that.
Thank you. Very thorough.
I've got Mike in the queue, and I'll just start out for a minute, and just some things that I thought about as I listened to you all. I'm wondering when we put a plan together to accommodate the population we expect. In the past, we've had a population to expect, and we did not reach that expected population. Is there a way to put together a, you can, you don't have to answer this tonight, answer it when you want to, but I just wonder if there's a way that you can trigger things as you see that you're actually going to need to accommodate what they?
We've looked at this. This has been something particularly that Councilor Zelenka has been interested in investigating, and we've, staff have been in regular contact with the Department of Land Conservation and Development representative for our region, and this has been one of the issues they've talked about. The law does not include provisions specifically to do that. The way to do that is to build in a shorter time period for check-in. I mean, once you adopt, once you adopt final action on this, at your next periodic review, the department would check and see if we're still compliant, or whether they want to make us look at it again. But you could build in your own timeline for looking at that again, at which time, if we determine that the population isn't growing the way that we expected it to, it would take county approval of a different population number, we believe. But it's not that it can't be done, but it is, it's not a matter of just right now building in a simple trigger, and we're looking further into this because there's been enough interest, so it's a continuing conversation to see what the state would think about different approaches around that.
My second question is, is there a way that if there is land that is currently within our UGB that we think has more value, even though it's within the UGB, is it possible to exchange that for land outside the UGB that we think is less desirable?
Soil-wise.
I mean, you might end up with the same amount, actually, of land. It would just be...
More useful.
We think that's possible. I mean, you would account for that, you know?
Okay. Just wanted to toss that into the mix of thinking. The other, to me, is, I don't mean this to sound negative in any way, shape, or form. I just think sometimes people don't have their eyes on the work of the Planning Commission as much as they have their eyes on the work of the council, and it seems like the work of the Planning Commission is really going to become hugely, more so than usual, relevant as we move through this discussion. So, how do we help the community focus more on what's going on in the Planning Commission phase of this, so that some of the work that would possibly wait until it gets to council and we have to go back and do it, how do we, how do we help a stronger focus on the Planning Commission process that better engages the community?
I think we've been doing that. I think we can continue doing that through our public outreach and our workshops and our webpage. Everything's linked and very up to date, and we've been getting really good attendance at our Planning Commission meetings lately.
Good.
So, I think that's already starting to happen.
How good is good?
Pretty much, I mean, we haven't had a lot of public comment on this issue yet at Planning Commission, but, I mean, we have anywhere from 15 to 20 people when we talk about these issues, and that's a pretty good turnout.
I realize it is comparatively speaking. I'm just suggesting that maybe this, for this period of time, some kind of ramping up, and if we can help with that in any way, I'd like to think about how that we could make best use of the people that we asked to take on these big jobs. And then the last thing is, I'm hoping that we're tracking very, I know it takes work, but I hope we really track our Triple Bottom Line experience, because I think it can, and I mean that not in terms of how we use it ourselves, but how we track it to show other people how it works, because I think it's something pretty innovative and could be useful to other communities, and we ought not to, not take full advantage of really sort of keeping our eye on it in the sense of something of a product that might be useful for others going through these same kinds of things. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, and there's a chance I'm going to need more than one round.
Okay.
I wanted to say first, wonderful presentation. Sorry, you were saddled with some of the people in your video that you were saddled with. Good work, anyway. Yeah, or lack thereof.
Speak for yourself.
I was actually doing that. That's what I was doing, was trying to be humorous. For the folks who are watching this, I just wanted to say, I think it's pretty clear that based on what 33, 37 puts in front of us, and what the county has already adopted, and what the county commissioners have already adopted in terms of 34,000 people coming here, we have three choices. We're going to grow up, we're going to grow out, or we're going to grow some combination of the two. And personally, I think we're probably going to get to some combination of the two, and so that's where some of my questions and the things I've brought up earlier, I think, become important to me when we consider some of those impacts. Now, you've kicked, you know, you guys have done some of this planning exceptionally. I think you guys have Goal One nailed. I really am impressed with the amount of information that you've presented in the parts that we're going to do here that are driven by what people have told you and by what you've heard from the community, and I think you've done a fantastic job in that regard, and some of the things the mayor mentioned. But there are some other parts that concern me. We've talked about these before. I noticed that you've kicked the natural resource protection pieces inside the UGB out of this potential. When we first started talking about this, I brought it up the first time during the ECLi conversations, and it was said that we'll make allowance for that in the process of Envision Eugene. When we talked about the Envision Eugene process first, it was brought up that we'll consider that before adoption in February, and now, what I'm hearing is that we're not going to do any kind of analysis of, for example, one point that I brought up, drainage ways, which I think is a critical component, because what you're saying is, to the people of Santa Clara that I get to represent, that everything that is undeveloped there and considered in that ECLi study is developable, every bit of it, and that none of what they would consider important with regard to their drainage ways are going to be protected, at least by the city. And I think that's a concern to me. I think there are a lot of people who, if they were more plugged into what we're talking about here, might be pretty upset about that, and I want to know how we can do this without blowing the timeframe all to pieces. Going to need another round, but my concern is, what's the relationship between 11 and 17? What are we going to be able to cover and not cover? And then, I guess I would say, some of the things we're doing in the first 12, 14, whatever the number was, are for me quite a bit less important than that one particular item, and I'd like to see us swapping out the time spent, or have you address why you chose what you did. And I'll need a second round, ma'am.
I've got you in for a second round. You want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. I wanted, Emily was just pointing out that I want to clarify that items one through 13, although recommended by staff for inclusion, they're not, we don't feel like we can do them within the current timeline. I just want to make, be clear about that, that that would require an extension of the timeline.
One through 13?
Yes.
I thought you just said those are the ones you could do.
That we are recommending to do, but that they would include, they would necessitate an extension, a timeline extension. I'll actually caveat that by saying one through five, those that are legally required, we would address to the extent that they are legally required within the current timeframe.
We've had four years to know that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll get it in a second round.
Did you want to answer any more about the drainage way issue?
Well, we could provide a little bit of background, but the first thing I'd like to offer is that we could certainly sit down with our public work staff and chart out a timeline, see how long it would take to address that issue, and we'd be happy to bring that back to you. And just for a little context there, and Emily, you can help me if needed. Currently, those drainage ways that do have protections inside the urban growth boundary, there are three different mechanisms. There are those that have Goal Five resources on them, and they have a certain level of protection on them. There are then, there's a WQ, a Water Quality Overlay, and those have certain protections on them specifically related to water quality, and then there's a WR, I believe it's called, overlay, which has natural resource significance, and so those have protections. So, I believe that the drainage ways that Councilor Clark are talking about are those that are not protected by either of those three existing protections.
We'll come back, I think. Okay. Andrea?
Okay. May I answer my questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation. The actors were fine, but I'd like to see the Spanish version dubbed, you know, so that their lips are moving, so that, you know, with the population demographics that are shifting, I think it's important that we get some input personally. So, I guess just, and I do support the first routine moving forward, and I would like to hear about, more about the timeframe that you would need. I hear what you're saying, Mayor, about having more eyes on this project, and I don't know if the Planning Committee's meetings are on Metro TV.
They're not.
I mean, would there, I mean, I think that that would really be a good idea to have them on there. I know they cost, but this is, you know, this is like a one-time thing that we're going to be doing this, and I really would like to see what those numbers would cost.
You're suggesting for a period of time?
For the period of time that we're going through this process, because I agree with you, Mayor, 20 people in a room, I mean, everything's relevant, and I'm not saying that those 20 people aren't important, but, you know, when I hear the comments that I hear about us, when I'm in line at the grocery store, I know people are watching us, and it isn't that they're watching in detail, but that people have an idea about it. And then, you know, I think that would be really good, because I know I get counter, how would I say this? I think it'd be really good to have some, have it on TV, because in that way, we can refer people to the conversation, and that would also give us opportunities to say, we don't know what we're going to do yet, because we don't. We don't have an idea. We, you know, we don't have a, and we don't have an opinion. So, I think that would really be helpful for us as councilors, too, to be able to refer people to that.
Alan?
I would just say, just, actually, I think that's a great idea. We'll take a look at that, unless there's some really showstopper on that, we'll just try to figure out how to make that happen.
Yeah, just for the period of time that we're going through this process, I think it'd be really important.
That all by itself, I think.
Does that automatically get webcast when you do that?
At least so.
Alan?
Great presentation, very thorough. Sorry it's late. So, I'm interested in what the timeline looks like if we include doing one through five fully, not just the legal requirement part, and also six through 13, and then what it would take to also incorporate the other ones that you're not recommending, and paraphrase, Councilor Pryor, you can have it fast, cheap, or right.
I can use two.
And you can only have two, and I think the most important one here...
I think cheap is off the table.
Yeah, cheap's not even on this one. So, it's fast or right, and you can only have one. And I think it's very important to do this right. This is probably one of the most important things that we've got in front of our plates this decade, and so I'm really curious to see what it takes to get this done right. The February deadline is imposed by us, correct? It's self-imposed deadline.
That's right.
And we want, and we wanted to be able to hold our feet to the fire, so that if folks wanted to be able to go to the legislature, I suppose they could in the middle of that term, but I'm less concerned about that now than I am about doing this right, and making sure that we end up with the analysis that makes our decisions at the end fully informed. I'm a little worried that our artificial and self-imposed timeline is pushing us into a position of making decisions that we're not, don't have complete analysis on. I mean, numbers six through 13 aren't even going to be done if we keep on the timeline, right? So, when would we be able to get back from you a timeline that would incorporate all 13 of the recommended ones?
Well, I think we could give you some sort of general stuff tonight. For us to give specific, particularly for the remainder items, not beyond 13, I think we'd have to spend some time looking at that. We're coming back June 14th.
Why don't we say June 14th, we can come back with a...
Comprehensive.
You don't want to give a ballpark now.
What's that?
You don't want to give a ballpark now. Okay.
Helen, you're done.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to call on Mike for a second round, but I did want to pose something that I haven't fully thought out, but it seems to me, if there's a desire on the part of some to be sure we do a thorough enough job, that we will feel like we can stand firmly on it in the future. On the other hand, there are people who've been worried about things being hung up for a long period of time and have timelines that they care about. I don't know if there's a way to give some confidence to the people who have been worried about wanting something shorter, to deal with some things more quickly, so they're given an indication that those are dealt with, and then look at taking extended time for other things that won't necessarily interfere with what those interests are. I don't know, I'm just putting that out as a, as a thought of a way to try to accommodate both fears and interests in some way, assembling that in a way that can give confidence to people who come at it from very different directions.
I think we can try to do that when we come back to you on the 14th. I think one of the things that we had talked about in looking at what timelines might be involved in the different scope items in here, was setting up a timeline that involved milestones, so that we were hitting targets. So, it wasn't just, let's take X amount of time, and, you know, we'll get done when we get done. It's, here's what we need to do... It's, here's what we need to do, here's how long it will take to do it, here are the timeline milestones that we are going to hit to continue making the kind of progress we need to make to be moving forward. So we might be able to address that question within those sort of milestone targets.
Appreciate thinking about that, because I'm looking for, us not having a feeling from the get-go that we're trying to shortchange each other in any way, shape, or form. And do Mike, and Alan, and Betty.
Yeah, I want to take up where we left off there, but first, I want to say, I've tried while working at this table really hard not to ever say anything negative about the staff, because I think you guys do a fantastic job, and I think you work really, really hard. But I'm just really disappointed here that we've known about this requirement for a very long time, and I wish we would have done more of this specific work, which will give us a better indication of whether or not we can make proof of our goals than as much of the community involvement work as we're planning to do. That's all very critically important. But whether or not it holds up in court, or whether or not it passes at Luba, is also very important, and doing it right matters. That's why on May 16th of 2007, I proposed at the Budget Committee that we include $200,000 to start this process ourselves on our own timeline, and to do it right and our way before the state imposed 3337, was because I knew it was going to be something we needed to do, and it was something that we would want to do right. But we didn't. And we decided to let them force us. And when they did, two and a half years ago, we've known this day was coming. And I'm just kind of disappointed that we don't, that we're going to end up pushing this thing out for yet another undetermined amount of time. And I must tell you that agreeing to some of the decision points along the way, for me anyway, was dependent on the fact that we weren't going to delay this inevitably and for a very long period of time, because that's serving other people's ends in and of itself. Delay is, to a certain extent, serving a certain interest's ends. And it's really disappointing to me that I'm hearing us say that we don't have any choice, because I think we do. I would, like Alan has mentioned, agree that it's really important to do this right. And to the extent that we're not making allowance for the other types of drainage ways, the other types of lands that we want to protect, we're going to end up with arguments in the community. We're going to end up with people who are working to try to stop projects because they don't feel that we're protecting something that needs to be protected, and they're going to use the regulatory system to do that, when we should be taking account of it right now, in advance and preparing intelligently. And so I'm hearing what you said, and I'll look forward to seeing the timeline, but I'm pretty disappointed. The last thing I would say is, well, I'm going to need a third round now that I see my other note here. One other thing, there are a lot of things we have to do to be able to prove statewide goals, but one of the things I'm not sure we need for the sake of goals, and I'm not hearing us talk about, is, are we doing an intelligent enough analysis that if we build densely and build taller, for lack of a better way to say it, that we're dealing with the underground potential problems that are there in our infrastructure, and whether or not it can handle the level of density we're talking about?
All right.
I would love to hear the answer to that, though, first.
Well, I can tell you the answer is yes, and probably for all the right reasons, one of which is, we're legally required to. So, I mean, that is one of the things that has to be shown, that we, that the city can accommodate the, will actually include the infrastructure needs for that dense development. And if we can't show that we've done it, then we can't do it. So in other words, if we're planning on taking what currently supports X number of dwelling units per acre, translate that into trips per peak hour or day, we, if we're increasing that density to X plus, I don't know, 100 units per acre-
I'm talking about the sewer system.
That's all part of it.
That's very, that's true. It's not just trips for transportation, but it's sewer, it's water. We have to be able to show that even, whether it's because of something we've done to a regulation within the urban growth boundary, or because we're adding land, wherever we're putting those new bodies, we need to show that we can get them those services.
Alan.
So I agree with what the mayor said. I think there's a whole bunch of different interests in this, in this process, and as much as we can, it would be good to accommodate all of them, including those that want to be done already, and those that don't want to do it at all. Those kind of folks, they stick out at the ends there, and I'm working with the 90% in the middle, that want to get this done but want to do it right. And so I think deadlines are great. In fact, I'd be very unsuccessful without deadlines, and sometimes, I hate deadlines, but they, but they really make you focus. And so if, I hope what you meant by milestones is deadlines along the way, so that we say, okay, we need to be here by this date and done by this date, and make sure that we're there. I guess I a little bit disagree with Mike, that I think this process has evolved a lot. I think our understanding about how complicated it is, and how sophisticated we need to be about it, and how much public involvement there is, has evolved over time. And I'm not so sure we would have been able to come up with this list of 19 items a year And so I think it's appropriate to, that's why we're doing these checkbacks, is to look, make sure we're on the right track, and to adjust as necessary, and this is one of those times I think it's necessary to do it right. On the trigger question you brought before, Emily, I've been pushing this pretty hard because I think it's kind of a, it's bad policy to make irrevocable 20-year decisions based on a number that we, is going to project out, that we know is going to be wrong. And so somehow getting triggers along the way that allows us to have a flexible plan that can adjust as we move down the road makes a lot of sense, and maybe we ought to look at that in terms of the 2011 legislative session, and start thinking about maybe an exemption for us or to the land use laws that allows that kind of planning to do. I mean, we're talking about a planning law that was made in the 70s. Planning has evolved an enormous amount since then. We've talked about the jaws of uncertainty and the ways of doing different types of planning, and to hold to this 1970s methodology doesn't make any sense anymore in my book, and it's bad public policy. So modernizing the planning rules would be my objective in a legislative fix to this, if that's what we need to do, if DLCD and LCDC don't believe we can get there.
Betty.
Thank you. First, I have a question. Where did you come up with 4,000 single-family homes?
That is, came from the analysis out of the ECLAC project. It was determined that, actually, a little background, it was determined that about 15,000 homes would be required over the next 20 years. About 10,000 of those homes could currently be accommodated inside our urban growth boundary, leaving 5,000 homes that could not. And of those 5,000, 4,000 are, based on past trends, would be single-family homes, and 1,000 would be multifamily. But those are past trends, and we actually do have the ability to reexamine those trends moving forward.
Okay. The past trends is what disturbs me, that we don't know that things are going to be the same, and as Alan said, we don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. And I think this is, this requirement is outmoded, to require us to say what will happen 20 years from now. There can be a lot of things. For example, you drive along West 11th, you will see very small buildings, one story on large plots of land, and most likely, I'm not suggesting we ask those people to tear them down, but most likely in 20 years, they'll be gone. And there may, that land may be used for something else that's more efficient. I don't see any point in rushing, and I don't know what Mike means by delay is serving some interests. I don't know what interests those are. Maybe he'll tell us later. And, but I, I think we, that we need to work on changing the law that requires us to do a 20-year plan. Things could change a great deal in 20 years, we could. So I say, I, mainly, I don't think we need to rush. I think what we're required to do, we need to do, what we're legally required to do. But then we need to take more time to think about other things. Thank you. And I'll wait to hear what interests are being served by taking more time.
Chris.
Thank you. I can appreciate frustration over what seems like the incredibly glacial pace that a lot of things in government tend to take. I was just having a conversation with somebody today who was talking about how slowly the wheels grind, and it reminded me of when my three sisters and I were kids, we would all tie ourselves together with a rope and then walk around the house and try to go up and downstairs and walk all around. With the four of us tied together, we didn't move very fast. But it was because the four of us were tied together. If we had just all gone our own ways, we could have got there real fast. We are all tied together, and so we're going to move at that pace. I don't want that pace to deliberately be an impediment, any more than I want that pace to be faster than the four of us tied together, or the eight of us tied together, or the 150,000 of us tied together can move. So I want this to move at the pace that does produce the best product. And I know that if I could see the end clearly, I'd want to get there as fast as I can, but some of us may see an end more clearly than others. I don't see an end as clearly maybe as some other folks here do. And so I'm willing to kind of move along at a little slower pace as I try to figure out what that vision is. At the same time, I don't want to let the process become the impediment, because that may have been something that has been tried in the past, but I don't think that's where we are now, particularly with this body. I don't, I don't see this body, which is the policymaking body, as being engaged in using the process against itself, at least I hope not. And so I think as the people who are providing the energy behind this, keeping you as staff moving, I'm hoping we're being sincere about it, and saying we want to move at as quickly a pace as we can, but still do a good job. I just spent, you know, two minutes basically talking in a giant circle, but I think it's really important to say that I don't have the expectation that people are going to do bad in this process. My expectation, my best possible outcome, is that people go, okay, let's see if we can't do this the best way we can. And because we're going to be all tied together, it's going to go fairly slow, and actually we may trip around and fall a few times, but at least we're going to be moving. And so I think from that standpoint, I want the best possible product. I'm like, I'm like Alan, I want the best possible product we can get. I want to, if there's low-hanging fruit here, I want to get them. And the timeline hopefully can include what low-hanging fruit on here we could deal with, out of order, if it could be dealt with easily. Those things that are required by law, what would it take to do them right? And then what would be the timelines on these other things? And then let's have a real sincere discussion about how quickly we think we can get through them.
So I just want to say, when Chris painted that picture, my first picture of he and his siblings was them all tied in a group together, all going in different directions.
All of our backs were together.
Yes. And so my vision would be all tied in a row, heading somewhat slowly but steadily in the direction together.
We did it the worst possible way.
I'm seeing an interesting retreat next year.
You don't want to care.
Oh, please.
Thanks for that picture.
And I also wanted to, I also wanted to talk about the 20 years for a second. I think what the 20 years, it may be, feel overly regulatory, but I think what it's urging you to do is just get past thinking about today, get past thinking about tomorrow, and get out to thinking about the future and trying to plan for it. And that's what it's, that's, that's what we're being really asked to do. So finding some way to do that, that gives us some opportunity while we're doing it to say, here's a change we think we need to make, I think is what we were talking about. Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Chris. I just wanted to say that while Sarah gave it a run earlier, you're still chief captain metaphor around this table.
Unfortunately.
That was a metaphor, that was true.
That's true. That's even more disturbing.
I tried to make the point as clearly as I could before that I, too, want to see this done right. That's why I've been working on it for a very long period of time. I would hate to see all the time, money, and effort spent on this, not produce something that's both legally defensible and is helpful to growing the community the way the community wants to grow. So I'm hoping that we do that, too, but I'm concerned that we're, we're making the appropriate choices of how we spend staff time and on what in order to be able to get to the best result in the least amount of time, in the most efficient way possible. And to that end, another question with regard to transportation. Now, last time, what was it, when did we last, oh, by the way, I wanted to say, too, Alan, the legislature does have a remedy for that, it's called periodic review, and they had Portland do it every five years. I'm sure we can talk them into letting us do that as well, if that's what you're pushing for. Maybe we could do that. The, the last time we did transplan was?
Adopted in 2001.
And updated in 2002.
And as a part of that passing, because our transportation system wasn't quite capable of handling everything that we thought it should be able to handle, our unique solution was nodal development. Do I have that about right as a proposal to how to handle some of those?
It was an integrated land use and transportation plan that looked at transportation, land use measures, and also transportation demand management strategy. So it was one of three legs of a stool for that particular plan.
And we had kind of a plan for how many nodes that we anticipated?
I don't recall the-
18.
I had five, was that true?
It's a total number.
We started with 18 every-
There were-
More than 30?
Initially, there were-
Areas to be looked at as potential nodes.
How many have been done so far?
Sounds like Rob wants to add something.
It was to, it wasn't because our transportation couldn't handle a certain capacity, it was because there's a rule in the transportation planning rule that requires communities to reduce their vehicle mile travel per capita by 5%. And our model showed that we could not meet that over the life of the transportation plan. So instead, we agreed to certain performance measures, and one, and some of those had to do with creating mixed-use centers. So we designated these mixed-use centers, but I think we were probably overly ambitious about, I think we designated something like 38, and some of them were probably not very realistic.
How many of those got essentially created?
Half a dozen, maybe, would you say, in different?
My recollection, when LCDC was here in town and we had a meeting, was that there was some memo discussed that was to be decided in March and kind of analyze how we did on that. And I never did hear what their conversation was.
Well, we went back to them, and that conversation's actually going to be continued in July at the commission, so we haven't heard back from them. We didn't, we met with them, and we talked about our, what performance measures we've met, and we've showed that we've largely met them, but we're going to have a fall meeting at the commission in July, so we'll report back to you after we have that conversation.
Is there any possibility that the LCDC will look at that and say, you guys really didn't measure up to doing the work that you needed to do with the last transplant from 2001?
It's possible, but from our conversations that we've had with the state, with the staff at the department, it seems that we're on target to meet that.
Really? Okay, wonderful. I just wonder what kind of hole that put us in for moving forward with this now, if what we have done and planned up to this point may have been insufficient. It goes along the lines of what I was talking about last time, with the Beltline being a failed facility already, and we're talking about how much redevelopment we can do with inside the current UGB, leaning on that as something to say we can handle the transportation. I'm wondering exactly how we'll do that, when I think we're in a much bigger hole than we, we give ourselves credit for. Thank you.
Alan, we're out of time, so you get one more.
Two really quick comments. One, I think 20-year planning is actually very good. I think that's what we should be doing, but along the way, we should have a plan that has, be flexible enough so that has triggers in it. So it's not, don't do away with 20-year planning, it's keep 20-year planning, but let's have a plan that makes sense and modernized. I'm wondering if there's a way, instead of just addressing 14 through 19 and how long that would take, but pick what, we could cream-skin off of those and put in the process, and how long that would take.
We're going to wrap up our work session now, and we've got just barely 10 minutes till our regular session. Thank you all very much. And thank you all for the-
Thank you, guys.
-in-depth conversations.